Okay, we're set to go. Uh, let's uh call this meeting to order real quick. Uh, are we ready to deal with the recording? Thank you very much. Welcome everyone to the uh October twelfth uh school board meeting. It's now five P M. And all board members are uh present, students and uh adults. Uh, and with that, uh, do I have a motion to establish the agenda as published?
So move.
And a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, students?
Aye.
And uh directors?
Aye.
Aye. That's uh two zero five zero to establish the agenda. With that, uh, we'll move to refer for recognitions.
Great, thank you. Um, we have uh several recognitions here this evening. Um, and the first of which that I want to start off with is from our schools foundation. Um, uh, certainly want to uh remind everyone, I had some statements uh earlier on, I had a short video. Uh, we'll have our phone-a-thon later this uh month, uh, which will be a great opportunity for our community. Um, to come together and again, but I want to welcome the foundation here. Uh, we have members from our foundation as well as our foundation board. So Tammy Shoup, our executive director, I'll turn it over to you.
A lot of people with me today, it's really exciting. I think last year was just Bridget and I. Um, Daniel Odivich is our treasurer this year on our board. And Megan Banta is our president. And Julie Shea is a board member and Bridget Olson, you probably all know, she was here with us last year. But we really were, we're very honored always to present this check to you guys, um, to the schools. We have a great job and I think we all are just um so grateful for such a generous community. Um, this year, we're presenting eight hundred eighty-two thousand and ninety-five dollars. We're inching our way up. Every year has gotten a little better since COVID. I think last year uh was eight something, I can't quite remember the number, but we are higher this year. Um, we were able to have the breakfast, which made a huge difference. Um, we are adding a auction in the beginning of December, a silent auction, or not a silent auction, but an online auction, a holiday shopping auction this year. And our goal for that auction is a hundred thousand. So we are really dedicated to hitting that million, getting back up there, um, where we were a few years before COVID. Um, but we just really want to thank you guys for all you do. And we're just honored to present this on behalf of the community, really.
Enjoy it. I'm gonna do a group picture.
Are we doing a picture?
Oh, we're gonna take pictures, alright.
Almost got it.
No way. No way. Alright, on me, three smiles, three, two, one. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to keep it here tonight?
I'd like to give a personal. Oh hey, I can't tell, they're in the camera. Is it there? Yeah, I'd like to get doing that.
Uh, sorry, lots of fundraising. Alright, you're just walking email?
Thank you.
Um, as I've said before, our schools foundation, um, you know, their support is integral to everything that we do. Um, sometimes people say, where does my exact dollar go? And um, we can definitely do directly. And sometimes I know exactly where that dollar went. And sometimes I can say, your dollar went here, which allowed us to take this dollar and spend it here. And sometimes there's that indirect nature of it, but um, it's such a big part. And uh continues to affirm the support that we get from our community. And I had a great conversation last night with a community member who's looking to get involved in a new way and is a new family. So what's been interesting and and exciting is kind of, you know, we've had some really uh longtime supporters, but their kids are aging out of the schools. And it's not that they're not going to continue to be supporters, but they're not going to be board members. They're moving on to new things, but we have new families, kindergarten families and others who are becoming part of the board. So it's exciting. Um, some other announcements um that I want to um just make here. Um, the first is that uh we have National School Lunch Week uh coming up here, uh, or ongoing this week. And I significantly, I especially want to point out um two people during the transition. Obviously, we had a chance to recognize and honor Carol, um, who was with us for um, you know, over twenty years. But in her place, uh, we welcomed it, we welcomed in Samantha Waters. She started this week. And we've also been supported by Adrian Carcas. And both have been from Chartwells. And I think we've had a pretty seamless transition so far. So I want to thank them for everything they're doing. The next one is we have National School Bus Safety Week coming up next week. It's also when we start doing our counts, uh, and we start sending in our counts to O S P I for ridership, um, which then helps with with our funding. And so our transportation department, as always, they continue to make tweaks and changes to the routes. Um, you saw transportation update in a previous meeting, uh, and to try to be as responsive as possible. But exciting time for our transportation department as we continue to uh think about the electrification of our buses, but the safety is number one. And uh if you recall, last year, we received a letter, um, that we had a perfect report from the Washington State Patrol. Uh, and that's the team who does an excellent job um in that regard. Um, the next one is next week, uh, just, I'll do an announcement and a and a recognition. Uh, next week, during our visit to I M S, we seem to always hit it every year. We'll be part of the Great Washington Shakeout. Uh, we'll be participating in the earthquake drill, uh, while you're there at I M S next week. Um, and that's a drill we participate in every year across our entire district, uh, as we conduct drills for readiness uh in the event that we need to put that into action. Uh, and then lastly, for recognitions, um, I want to just recognize that it is National Principals Month. Um, the governor has uh signed and and issued a proclamation, which we have online. But um, you know, as a, as a former principal, I've been out of the seat long enough, no longer to have the credibility I once did amongst our principals. And um, and I, it it, it's a more complex job than ever. It's more complex than when I was in that seat, um, in terms of what our students need, the dynamics at play in our communities and um the pressures that are involved of being a principal. Um, the work that they do, the time they put in and the care they have for the schools is um second to none. And and I, they have my utmost um admiration and appreciation. So I hope they're not watching tonight, I hope they're maybe resting, we have a big uh night tomorrow night for the high school. But um, if they go back and watch the tape, but I'll be sure to tell them again and again how much we appreciate them. And so those are my recognitions.
Thank you very much. Take a superintendent report next as well, man.
Great, um, I am a little raw tonight. I'm not gonna be, uh, I can't uh mince words on that. It's been a really tough week. Um, I think it's been a tough week for um everyone. It's a tough week to be a superintendent, but it's just a tough week to be a person. And um, you know, Saturday morning, when I woke to the news of what was happening in Israel and the attacks from Hamas to Israel, you know, one of my first calls was to Amy Levin at the J. And uh, reached out to her, um, to make sure we started that connection. And she's been such a great partner, um, in previous times when we needed their support, um, whether or not there were incidents with our students or or others. And we've talked every day since then. Uh, we exchanged voicemails today, we didn't get a chance to talk. But um, she also put me in touch with um some leaders uh in the Jewish community. Um, I've reached out to um community members and part of our Muslim community here on Mercer Island and um spent time, you know, just in a lot of reflection and and looking at the the world around us. Um, I obviously issued a letter on Monday. Um, I had a number of superintendents who received my letter, um, and were grateful because they were struggling with how to write it. And uh, I did share with them that I also received some feedback and some of it was really positive and appreciative. And others um had a different take on that letter, that it didn't reflect um the enormity of the atrocity towards Jewish people. And that certainly wasn't my intent. And I have a letter that's gonna go out, um, again, either right after this meeting that I've worked on and and worked on with Ian and Aaron. But um, one of the things that I learned this week is I sit in in reflection and, you know, the notion and and uh, I got some counsel on this this week, that these times and what's happening is both complex and simple at the exact same time. The complexity of it, though, is tied up in all of the politics and the history. The simplicity, um, as it was shared to me and it really resonated, is that we've got a moral atrocity and it's wrong. Loss of life for innocent civilians. The horrific acts of violence towards people, um, it it, it's inhumane. And I I don't think, I can't um imagine what it's like to be there. Um, we had seven students who were in Israel, um, and I had a chance to talk to their families. Um, and um, you know, they're, they're doing remarkably well as parents, but I can't imagine having my own kid, you know, in danger or in a place like that. So um, I'll have a letter. Um, I, there's a, there's a needle I have to thread as a leader in our community and you do as a board. And that is that we have families who represent all faiths in this community. And um, they're all hurting in different ways. And uh, what our job is, is to make sure that our schools are safe, they're supportive and that they're ready for our students to come in and receive the wraparound support they need no matter what. So um, you know, uh, it's, it's just, it's, that part's been tough, so.
I wrote some words that I was gonna share during the board report, but it's on this. Would, would it be appropriate to make my comments?
That's fine, yeah.
It's for the staff.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, please.
So uh, as an American Jew and school board director, I've struggled with how to participate in the conversation when antisemitic acts occur within our district and our community. I don't have the luxury to hide behind my struggles anymore. I'm hoping my words will help in understanding the deep feelings that the worldwide Jewish community is feeling right now. Israel is part of our prayers, but so much more. It's our safe place, our homeland, where all Jews feel like they're home, even before they arrive for the first time. I was seventeen years old when I traveled to Israel for the first time. I went on a summer teen program with many friends from here and joined other Jewish teens from all over the U S and Canada. I remember vividly sitting next to my friend on the El Al flight as we touched down. Habein shalom aleichem started playing. We brought peace upon you and it's based on the greeting shalom aleichem, peace to you. My tears started flowing and I'm really not a crier. Even before I touched the soil, I felt home. One of the Jewish community's favorite games is to play Jewish geography. You know, oh, you're from Seattle, do you know this person, this person, this person? Why is it so popular? It reminds us how we are all bound together with our common homeland. It is more than a religion. It is a way to, way to feel connected when we often feel alone in our home communities. It's not six degrees of separation, it is one. I promise you, every single Jewish person in our community has a family member or friend who is directly impacted by these terrorist acts. Your Jewish friends are not okay. Our Jewish students and staff are not okay. Even our young students are struggling. They don't necessarily understand it all, but they know their foundation has been shaken to its core. The Jewish people suffer from generational trauma, from historical pogroms where entire communities were massacred, to the Holocaust, to children of Holocaust survivors, to the creation of the state of Israel, to the ongoing conflicts throughout Israel's seventy-five year history. The American Jewish community reels with every single time we experience an antisemitic attack. The statistics are alarming, or at least they should be if there was a true understanding of the actual number of incidents. Our Jewish community rap reacts with alarm as a result of every single incident. It's terrifying to know that people at best, at best hate you, at worst want to kill you or your children because you are a Jew. This is different. This isn't political, it is terrorism. Quoting Rob Wolf, that fellow Mercer Island parent and friend, Israeli politics alone are complicated. The Israeli, the Israeli Palestinian conflict is complicated. Many Jews, myself included, criticize the policies of the Israeli government as it relates to domestic and international issues. Criticizing Israel is not in and of itself antisemitic. What is antisemitic is projecting stereotypes of Jews onto the actions of Israel or holding Israel to a double standard you wouldn't apply to other countries. Every year, dozens of our high school students travel to Israel to participate in high school programs for part of the year. They return excited about their studies and bring back an enhanced view of the world, which enhances the learning for all of our students. Currently, we've had about a dozen Mercer Island students, not necessarily Mercer Island high school students, studying in Israel. They're returning home tonight, their studies cut short. They will need our support. They sheltered in bomb shelters to stay as safe as possible. Their views of the world will be changed forever. Please, post your support of Israel on social media, it has been remarkably scarce. Text and call your Jewish friends, ask how they are doing, or simply tell them you are thinking about them. It makes a difference to not feel so alone. Ask your kids to check in with their Jewish friends, they are scared and uneasy. They don't know who is safe to talk to about their fears. They need to know that their Mercer Island community supports them. Check in on our staff, they are impacted as well. Don't worry about knowing the right thing to say, just say something. I know many of us remember the trauma of nine eleven. This is Israel's nine eleven. This is the Jewish people's second Holocaust. Never again has happened. Please don't let it be forgotten.
Thanks, Director. Our flags were at half-mast today, um, that was issued by our governor um, in recognition of the atrocities, the loss of life, the hostages and um, you know, the armed forces from around the world, um, and and the safety of everyone and acknowledgement of what you've said better than I think many people can. We also know that there have been um worldwide threats specific to tomorrow and encouraging um a rising up of a jihad tomorrow. And in my communication that will go out tonight, I will be, I make specific uh recognition of this to notify our community that we are aware, we're in communication with Mercer Island Police Department. Um, we will have our S R O as we always do in our schools. I've asked for um police to just make periodic drive-throughs even our parking lots um tomorrow. We have an exciting homecoming parade and game tomorrow night. And um, we'll have extra support there as well, um, as we work through. And so I've also made our parents aware that, you know, I'm hearing that there might be some students who are feeling particularly um stressed, traumatized and may not want to come to school tomorrow. And as a reminder, mental health is an excuse, is an excused absence in our state and in our schools. And so I've notified our community too, that if that is the case, to please just call the schools like you normally would. And those are excused absences. On another topic, um, since we last met, um, I've been out in the community. I've had seven uh community engagement opportunities, um, two were with staff. Um, sorry, let me, let me complete the subjective of that line, um, regarding long-range facility planning. Um, I met twice with staff members who um wished to attend. I met with all of the P T A presidents, um, both of the council and then the local um schools. And I met with, and this was last week, and I met with the Lakewood P T A general membership meeting. And I gave those three groups, not the full presentation that we did this week, but a partial presentation. Um, then this week, uh, we, I spent uh Tuesday night uh with Leroy uh from Malum and David Mount. And then a number of people who are in the room today and Dreams and Ian, uh, Tony, Brandy, uh, uh, Aaron. Uh, help me out team, it's been a long week, I'm not forgetting any of our loved staff members. Um, but they um were there every step of the way with our community. Um, we had a hundred and seventy-five people attended in person between the three events. So we had the Tuesday night, the Wednesday morning at the community center, and then the Wednesday night at the community center that was also streamed. We had eighty-nine at one point online, uh, attending as well. So I, I certainly want to thank our entire community. We've received emails, as a board, you've received emails, I've received emails. Um, we have a survey that's out there right now. And then we've also had in-person feedback at those meetings. And uh, those have been invaluable opportunities to lean into the conversation and do just what you asked me to do uh twelve months ago. And you've asked uh along the way, and that is be engaged and be listening and get out there with our community. And so it's too early, I met with uh Tony and Brandy this morning at nine o'clock. Um, we've had some late nights, but you know, we started to kind of debrief and pull themes, you know, what are we hearing? And and it's way too early to go into a full comprehensive update. But I don't think it's too early to share three points. Um, one is, our families want to play a part in this process and they support our district. Um, the second one is, um, there's an overwhelming sentiment um to maintain the four smaller schools that were shared with us in two thousand twelve, based on the events that we've gone through so far. And that those smaller community schools um uh are important to people and that we should continue to explore options for improving our schools, but not at the, but not at, to the point of doing it to three schools and not four. And the last one, um, is that our families love their schools, they care about their schools. And I continue to be amazed that how many people went to Lakewood or Island Park or West Mercer and have come back to raise their kids here. I know of those families and I see them and I've heard about them and I've met them at Lakewood when I was a principal there. And then you go to events like this and it's tenfold to what you even realize. And sometimes people, they don't always share that at first, but they're proud of their schools. And and some of them are disappointed that they look the same that they did in nineteen ninety-four and they'd like to see some improvements. Um, but um, by and large, they're there for us, we'll be there for them. Um, and more will come. So you know, I think for you as a board, I think where we'll need to go next, and we don't have to do it tonight. I know we talked a little bit about, we can talk about process. Um, it's gonna take us a while to go through the surveys, it'll take us a while. We have quantitative and qualitative information. Um, and obviously, um, it's getting, it's getting real that two of you um aren't gonna be at at this table for very much longer, but we'll have two new board members. So you know, I'm thinking the first meeting in January is probably the best time to bring forward a comprehensive report. Doesn't mean we'll not continue to engage, but that's gonna, that's kind of my recommendation based on your cycle as a board, as well as giving us time to pull something together. So I'm, I'd welcome feedback on that, if you want to postpone that, please, which until the later president. I'm happy to do that, but just wanted to share those.
Thank you, thanks you very much for uh doing uh a difficult task of uh getting the feedback and making presentations to our community. I know as board members, um, we've, we've done the community feedback process multiple times, uh, through superintendent uh hirings, uh, multiple times, through uh, through facilities planning as well before and previous bonds before. Generally, uh, the way community feedback works is it's great for it to be bidirectional with uh people who are not part of the decision. The board is very much part of the decision, they're decision makers on this. But having a neutral vote presenting, doing Q and A, uh, just from our experts, from multiple times of experts, it's always been better conversations, better dialogue, uh, calmer room than when you try to talk to elected officials. Uh, so I appreciate the work you've done and I also appreciate the work for fellow board members to not make these conversations, uh, you know, a circus, quite frankly, that they could become by by staying out of them. I know board members will be reading email, uh, will be looking at the recordings. The recordings are already available. I think some, many of us will online as well, watching, watching in real time for the feedback. Uh, we did hear the feedback uh from many of these meetings. But I think it was great that Leroy and you and Brandy and the rest of the staff were able to have a great Q and A and dialogue with our constituents without, um, and in a constructive way that allows us to figure out that we want small schools, we want uh four fifty-person schools, without board members being the target of this communication. And I will say, we're very happy to have public input. There is three today, if there's more, more people can come and give us public input to the board as a whole. This means the board hears all the information together. The board hears the synopsis together, which we are all on the same page, as you mentioned. Two of us, Tam and I, will not be making the decision. So it's great that other people who are helping make the decision get the same feedback without necessarily having been at all these meetings. Uh, so I think there's a, there's a lot of good process that has taken place here to get us to this position. I am also very happy uh that you can do the presentation, January meeting, uh, without myself. Uh, Tam, I'll let you speak for yourself as well. Uh, any other comments from the board, so?
Yeah, I did just want to say that I did attend uh the last session last night just because I kind of wanted to hear people's concerns in person, but I was just there as an observer, like a fly on the wall.
So much so that I forgot to even mention she was in the audience. Not a good move by the superintendent. They, they don't teach you that in school, they really tell you. If you got a board member in the audience, you better mention it.
I did introduce myself so that people would just know that I was there because I was sitting at the back and I didn't want people to be like, she's spying on us, you know? So, um, but it was helpful for me and I, I encourage, if you didn't, if anyone who didn't watch one of the sessions to watch like the whole thing through, even though we've all heard the presentation, a lot of times spy mail. Um, but it was, it was very helpful to hear it from people in person. Um, I, I, I do have a couple of questions and I don't know if you want to talk about kind of any process aspects between now and January, at some point tonight or at the next meeting, like?
Um, yeah, if you, if you have feedback on this right now, let's do it now.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of just channeling some, some questions that I, that I either heard last night or like people reached out to me today to ask me questions. And um, like one of the questions was, when the board, you know, gets this full report of like what the, what the community's thinking and then the board has the discussion and the board says, okay, this is actually our proposal, and will there be another round of feedback on that? Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think that's a process, I mean, that's why I think we should talk process of how do you, um, I think it, what I, I think we're all on the same page with is, this isn't just a comeback and you're ready to make a decision. You're gonna have questions, you're gonna have feedback. Um, and that's where we work together and you can say, hey, as a governance team, we want the superintendent with the staff to go back and work on this. Or we're ready to make this decision, but not these decisions. Um, and you know, that might be a study session first and then we do a board meeting. And so that you get it, we get a chance to have more of that roundtable conversation. And then when we're ready to do something more, it could be that next board meeting. That's another way we could do it.
So, so I'm not sure if now is the appropriate time, but some of the data I would like to see would be more fleshed out data in terms of average enrollment at the elementaries in various like comparative like districts. What the cost would be in a capital, I know we, we have a rough estimate on the operational, but for capital for, you know, three foot, uh, a three footprint versus a four footprint elementary district. Um, so at least in the January meeting, along with like the community sentiment, I would like to see more sort of objective data regarding what would drive a decision one way or the other and the rationale for that. Tam, any thoughts?
I'm gonna ask, we're reading all the um emails that are coming through. It is really, like you said, it's really nice to see that people love their school and are such great advocates for it. And then you're reminded of how awesome Mercer Island School District is. And then you're reminded of how awesome Mercer Island School District is. And then I also see that people are acknowledging the ten the sincerity of your reaching out to the community and listening to them, right? So that's really appreciated. It must be really also hard to navigate, you know, a lot of emotions. I'm sure that's coming up on this. So from a lot of your emails and also yours, David, that's coming out. I was wondering if it might benefit us and you know, I haven't looked at the website lately, if it would benefit us from having a Q and A kind of? You know, because some of the questions I see you responding to both, it might be good to have everybody see it because there seems to be some misunderstanding if we put in a smaller if we put more students in a school, somehow the classroom size would increase, right? Or we would lose teachers and those kind of things. I think those those basic kind of questions that you're responding to individuals might be benefited to if we put it in a larger Q and A.
There there is a Q and A now, they they updated the website last week. But the answers that Fred is sending out are not like the 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 fullness of those answers is not part of that Q and A and it would be great to be like to instead of just answering the question, just have like a quote from you with the your full explanation. Because they're they're great, but it's.
I think we need video, that's the way I do it better.
Animation, no, but it really it's like it's like if you're having to answer the same questions over and over and over and over again, that that it would be nice, you could be like, that question's answered here, just to direct people.
Yeah, I thought some of the answers were really good and it would be nice to cut and paste what you've been saying.
For sure.
I agree.
And Tam?
I will thank you for, this was a big, big part of your week and and I knew you guys put a lot of time and thought in and imagine sleepless nights into into presenting all this information. I very much appreciate the feedback that we're getting. I I'm not surprised by it. What I worry about is who we're not hearing from because it's the not that that sways, I think the school community should be just school, meaning parents, kids. School community should be making the decisions about the education and structure. But it's our overall community that passes or fails bond. And we've gotten a lot of criticism about our budget and you know, it's as much as you know, I mean, it's the first, it's a lot of money. And I know that that's where the the committee went to was trying to save the community a hundred and fifty million dollars on a school that, you know, can't necessarily be justified numbers-wise. Totally want to hear from everyone and I appreciate it. And this was the response in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fourteen. So so it's not so surprising that it's it's the response now and that's great. That's what we're looking for. I would love to see, I mean, I'm looking forward to seeing kind of the next phase. I don't want to say taking the emotions out of it, but obviously that part of the discussion is very emotional, as it should be, it's our kids. But but conversations about money and and structures isn't as emotional. So I'm just hoping that we we can get some, make some progress on that part of it with with recognizing where the community at is at in terms of that preference for for the schools remaining the same, if that's the decision. And then, you know, when that when that decision is being made, I'm just saying if because no decision's been made, that's all I'm saying. But I'm I but you know, I mean, I think it also, I think there's also recognition that we have to be doing things with our structures. It's it's irresponsible not to, both safety-wise and money-wise. And so, you know, what do we do? It was, we we really struggled with, how do we present this? The consolidation proposal was a natural course that the committee went to. And it was based on saving the taxpayers millions, hundreds of millions of dollars. Knowing how and and people felt strongly about it too, but it was it was really fearing another bond failure because it's so much money. And so I'm just curious to see where the conversation goes. When we can take that piece, it was a big struggle on how to present. You couldn't really present the proposals without mentioning the consolidation because they're all intertwined. But if we can uninterwine them, then I I'm looking forward to that part of the conversation much more than than this one.
Yeah, I I am too. And I just, I'm concerned that if we, I understand that we need to wait until January because we're getting two new board members, that it wouldn't make sense to make like big decisions right now when we're just about to have a change of the board. But the emotions are running so high and there's so much uncertainty, especially for families at Island Park, that, you know, it's October now. Like just to be like, we're gonna collect your, you know, we collected your feedback and now you can just pause until January, right? Like I would love to have in place like a plan, even if that plan has to change later because we get two new board members and maybe they want to do something differently. Like I I would love if our board could, as it is now, could put together a plan for like, this is when these questions are gonna be answered and this is when we're gonna have the discussion about consolidation, even if that's in January. Like like plan it now so that people actually know what they're waiting for. It just seems like a a lot to have all this like emotion and worry and concern and then be like, okay, we'll see you in a few months, you know?
And that was part of the conversation that we had in planning for this meeting was, you know, the process conversation is important. The product is, we're not there yet, but the process. And I I hear you going in that direction in this conversation, which I think is great. If there are pieces of this that you're ready to make decisions on or that I can bring forward certain pieces, you know, we could take even parts of it right now as the current board sits. But if if you wanted to wait, December's tough because we all show up, we approve the minutes. And then two of you go and it's a big meeting for the first two, for the first meeting of two new board members is is kind of my is what's in my head on that. But I'm, we're happy to move faster on smaller chunks too.
The other one we could do is a study session around the project planning of this. And I think Dan and Deborah have both raised data that would be useful towards the January meeting. So we could work and ensure we're consistent with that data, have a little bit stronger timeline in place. I know right now the timeline is wishy-washy, we could strengthen that. All during the study session, October, November.
I think it also might be worthwhile because the committee, like I said, the natural direction was consolidation based on money and obviously the other factors. To maybe pull together the committee, to have a conversation. The community is strongly opposed to consolidation. What would, based on all the information you have, what would be proposals? It's just in the scout, not that the general community is, but just as a starting point in terms of, you know, that hive mind is a very thoughtful group that, you know, it kind of naturally went in one direction without without conversation.
But I but I do think, you know, as we did before, the twenty twelve bond kind of did a everything for everyone. And the twenty fourteen bond staged it out, just takes longer. And we we still have that option on our table.
Oh, for sure, but that's what I mean is going to the committee and saying, based on the community's response to the consolidation, does that change your your recommendations for how to proceed in the next ten years?
I actually think that that would, that would go some way towards helping the community feel listened to because I think part of people's, like I have utmost respect for people that serve on the committee and all of the, you know, listening and learning they did and how they kind of pulled pulled it together and made these possible recommendations, right? Or kind of possible options. But I think saying, okay, we put these ideas out there and the community feels strongly about this one aspect. If you, if we took that hypothetically off the table, then what would be? Would you come up with different options for like phase one, phase two kind of thing? Then I actually think that that's a way of like the community having input into the committee's work that they didn't have the first time around because of course they didn't know what the committee was gonna come up with. So I don't know if that's a possibility, who do we make that decision? I guess we would make that decision.
Yeah, we would make that decision.
Oh, I would.
So I'm sorry, I'm just gonna go quickly, Deborah, and Asha, if you have any feedback?
Um, not really, just kind of what Director Leroy was saying, like I'll be interested to see how we get like non-school families involved. I know like a lot of my friends were talking about this stuff. They're just saying like, my parents will never vote for that because I'm gonna be out of the school district. So be interested to see like how we get like those people on board with the plan and how we reach out to them.
So Dan?
Yeah, I mean, I think a natural decision the board could make would be whether you know, to maintain the status quo outside of a bond proposal that that has capital implications. Or if there's like a certain number for enrollment where just operationally it would seem it'd be seen as infusible to maintain four elementary schools. And 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 then of course, you know, the question, you know, the million-dollar question or, you know, multi-million dollar question, right? Is, you know, in a bond proposal, when would that happen? And you know, I think that there is a large range of when that could happen in terms of going forward to the community. And I think that'll be something, you know, for the next board to decide and to tighten up of what that looks like between, you know, now and five years from now.
Okay, Tam?
Just some thoughts like, I think that, you know, regardless of who's on the board, the board, whoever's on it, even if we have one or two meeting left, we should just move ahead and move as, you know, move along, right? And not, and because sometimes there is the with the switch over, it just brings everything back and we rehash a lot of this and we bring up a lot of things that we've been talking about. I like going back to the community idea only if we have, that the board, I feel like the board has enough information to make one decision or the other. It is just, and I think you said it Fred once, where it is just depending on what lens you're looking through, right? If you're looking through a financial lens, if you're looking through a system lens, or you're looking through this group of community of students that will be impacted, right? And it is choices that we make. So the, and so I think it's really at this point where the board should have a conversation and what kind of lens, what kind of direction that we're going forward. And once we kind of go towards that, then we might go back to the community, the committee that, you know, to kind of figure out a little bit more of the steps, you know, what would look like, you know, if we want to utilize them in that manner. But I think going back to the committee just to say, oh, now that this has an option is kind of putting a lot of account onus on them where if people are mad, be mad at us, I mean. So I feel like we have enough data to make decision. It is just a matter of what kind of lens that we're making this improve. And and I think that should be a conversation of the board, whether this board or next board. But I hope we don't rehash the process because that rehashing is further the trauma. It's like, not everybody will like what, you know, but as a whole, we can hopefully have consensus in that we're moving the district forward and we're mitigating like potential negative impact on folks, right? So we have to be thoughtful about that. But I don't think we can avoid, I don't think it's, any decision we make is everybody is gonna be happy or satisfied. But I don't want to further harm and sometime dragging on our process further, we lose sight of really our goal.
I like Dan's suggestions of either making a, if this is what the board decides, making a statement that, you know, this this conversation is over until a capital something is proposed or until enrollment hits and be very specific and and with the justification of the numbers. And we know that that's what we, the numbers we talked about weren't for, I mean, aren't for several years at a minimum, hopefully. So I like that, it's very concrete and I agree. I mean, I with both you guys in terms of like, you know, if we know that this is the community's response and this is where we're heading, we are not consolidating. If that's the decision of the board at this moment in time, to be clear on that and and then be able to move forward with the rest of the process. So whether we decide that tonight or have a study session, I I also agree the sooner the better because we have that information or as soon as we see those numbers. But I'm a little bit worried that, I know there was a big outcry from Island, the Island Park community, like, don't do this, assuming that that was gonna be the closure. It was broadcast that way, I get it, but but it shouldn't necessarily have been a hundred percent. But but you know, I want to know, do the other elementary school parents feel the same way about the consolidation issue? And knowing that maybe it is their school, I mean, it's probably not Northwood, but you know what I mean, like, like, just in terms of future bond issues. I mean, the school that's impacted always has the biggest outcry and I'm not minimizing that. I'm just saying, I want to know what the other opinions are too.
I guess my question is, would, I know you guys would be super thoughtful and like super, I don't know what the word is, like, like kind of completionist, you know, like kind of take take pull together all of the the community feedback that you've received. But I guess my question would be, would it be possible to pull together, pull it together enough that it could be presented to us next, at the next meeting?
If what you were looking for is to help you make a decision and for for me to be clear from the decision about four schools or three?
Yes.
Yes, we can pull that because we can isolate that question, we can isolate it by school and have information for you on that, that's easier. Quantitatively will be harder. We're working with our partner on this who is helping us to actually write the code that will dissect the content analysis to help us make meaning of that. But I don't think you need that. We got that from the from the voices who were in the room. That's why I started with, it's clear to me based on what we heard that there was a strong desire for four schools, not three. So I think we have that and I can then show, hey, here at Lake Ridge, between the other three schools or however it is, here's what we heard from them as well. And we can do that as early as the next meeting.
I think a study session might also be useful because I think there's many complexities here. Most of the people making the decision, I mean, the earlier you can build a school, I think most optimistic on the slide was twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, those timeframes. So just about everybody in the school will have graduated to middle school. So there is nearly zero chance any voice now would would be impacted. So there's there's that issue. The other issue is, you know, as was mentioned, the broader community will want to say in this. Then finally, a third issue will be, you know, understanding kind of a timeline so that we can be clear with the other schools as to when things will be done. And that will, that also is important for our capital projects levy to know which schools we start doing repairs on and making sure. No, we don't want to wait for the move to leave before we fix it. I mean, I think there are all those type of things that came up at some of those meetings. So we don't wait for failure before repairing. So we could do a study session that kind of helps us understand what decision staff needs, what decisions the community needs. And then we can put that into kind of a penciled-out plan. This board could vote on it and support it, it would give feedback to the community. And as before, the next board could again look at that, vote on it, add their input and give feedback to their community. And then that could be taken to, you know, the community, the committee, anything like that. So I I I'm all in for that because I think there are many moving parts here, not just, you know, whether we have four schools or not.
Would you, I don't know what your schedule looks on Thursday look like right now. We could do a study session before the next board meeting and then go into it if you'd like to move that quickly. If your calendars on the twenty-sixth are open, we could start with a study session and then go into regular session. If that works.
Works for me.
Or I'll be on Zoom, but it would work for me.
Okay. I would suggest to give us maybe even a little break in between would be to start at three, if that works? Does that work, Director Dan?
Next Thursday?
Uh, the twenty-sixth.
Oh, no, I'm in Atlanta for conference.
Got it.
Is, what about the day before? I'm leaving for the conference, the twenty-fourth.
Tuesday, the twenty-fourth?
Tu- Wednesday the twenty, oh, Tuesday the twenty-fourth.
Tuesday the twenty-fourth, I'm pretty out there.
Yeah. That also works.
What time works on that for everyone? The phone-a-thon is that night, makes it difficult to do a night one for me?
Um, I can, yeah, so far I'm pretty open at eight, twenty-ten.
How about three o'clock? You mean, does that work?
The phoneathon is that day?
Correct.
If there's students in the boardroom too.
What's that?
Do you not want the students in the boardroom that day?
No, we might want, for the phoneathon, you mean? So we, we may be in one of the schools for our study session or somewhere else. We just may not be here. But let me turn to our team really quickly. Three o'clock on that day, does that work?
I can make it work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that three hours?
Um, I think two hours is sufficient. I would say three to five on the twenty-fourth for a study session. One of the things as you're talking, you know, that we were even speaking about as early as this morning, we being Tony Brandy and myself, you know, is thinking about, it feels like the last, the last long-range facility plan and maybe it was because of a failed bond and then a bond that passed, there's a lot of exhaustion with that. But we really only came up with a plan that addressed crowding of our schools in the elementaries and then part of the middle school and some of the high school. But what it didn't do is really start setting up of, if we were all talking about new schools then, they're only older now. And so I think what we'd like to also start engaging in, and this will be later down the road, but in the plan of not just having a, you know, a one-bond scenario in that, but what might it look like to have bonds that are going out? So that we're thinking about all of the facilities over time and then that also helps with the capital tech, the cap tech side. We have stuff we want to roll on this summer. And by making these decisions even now is actually gonna make it even easier for Tony and Brandy and Matt, um, and, and Kay to start thinking about that and then lining up projects. So this is really helpful.
So you're saying like a multi-bond scenario would be essentially almost, you know, a twenty or thirty year long-range facility?
Exactly.
Which, which also has the benefit for families that are concerned about the impact on their kids of, like, from COVID still, you know? Thinking, thinking of this as something that might happen imminently, I think, has been, has been like worrisome for a lot of families. And so knowing, we're talking about, you know, a ten-year horizon for something that's gonna affect their kid's school, where their little kids are far out of elementary school, like, I think that would be really reassuring just to have that timeline, even if it's penciled right now.
Okay. I think we've got, uh, marching orders for a study session and, uh, how would you move forward on this? And I assume you'll bring questions, similarly, that you'd like the board to be able to at least codify in some way in a resolution of some sort?
Yep.
Okay?
Two more things and they're just thank yous. One is to our committee, um, who's done, did so much work to get us. You have to start somewhere. And even though that's not always the most popular place to start, it helps us to get somewhere. And as I've said, sometimes these community engagement sessions help you to understand what not to do, even more than what to do. And, and that's helpful because then you can, um, go and then to our team who's, uh, alongside and help support all the way through, Andy Reeves and Brandy, Tony, Ian, Aaron, Chartwells, um, just thank you. It's been a long week, I know, but thank you for being there. And then finally to our community for showing up. You'd much rather work and be a superintendent in a community like that than one where you're really struggling to connect with families. So it makes it, uh, a lot easier. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And everybody for it.
Let's, uh, we've got, uh, seven minutes till, uh, community in, public input. Is there, uh, next topic we should move on to that is, I think the, the continuation of the school improvement plan is a bit longer.
Yep.
So students and governing board, student groups report? You guys have around ten, fifteen minutes?
Yeah, it should be not too long.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Great.
Okay, uh, impromptu switch up. Let's move to board policy twelve fifty. Students and governing board student prep report.
Um, before Ava and I, uh, begin our report, we just want to say that it's been a really tough week on students. Especially for the students who have family or friends in Israel. A lot of students feel really numb. They feel like they can't, like, look away from the news and the social media. And it's really hard to be like, learning in an environment where you feel like you don't know what you'll have to grow up to when you're seeing all this around you. So it's just been, it's been a really hard week on students. And, um, we're really happy that the seven MIHS students are now in Rome and they're coming home. But there's also so many more family and friends that students are worried about and praying for and they're thinking about them all day. And it's really hard to focus on studying some of that from the back of your mind.
Thank you, Asha. Okay. So now on that note, we're gonna start talking about, um, some of the things going on in the elementary school. So, uh, we just had our SSA, so we were able to collect a bunch of information, um, from the elementary schoolers. And some of the exciting things going on include, um, events like Bike and Walk the School Day and also school-wide assemblies, which have been exciting. And then also students are engaging in like school activities, like, um, extracurriculars, like student council and like the mallet club. And, um, the fifth graders have been participating in like, um, school band and orchestra and also safety patrol, which is definitely really exciting. And then they are also building a lot of friendships through, through these activities as well as with something called the buddy bench at recess that they have now, um, where kids who don't have buddies to play with can sit on the bench and find another companion. So that's really sweet. And now we're gonna move on to the middle school.
Yeah, so the middle school has been doing a lot of spirit days recently. The eighth graders just won their color war competition. They've been doing this like duck finding competition where like staff and teachers are hiding ducks around the school and the students are looking for. So it's been really good community building. There's new clubs like the news club, the board game club, the creative writing club, green team, and so much more. The sports teams cross-country and volleyball are really big teams this year, which has been exciting to see, especially because they'll feed into the high school teams. And the middle school band program will be playing an all-island band night on October twenty-seventh. And that will be with the high school band and fifth grade band as well.
And then, um, oh yeah, the students are also really excited about the snack shack, especially after its comeback after COVID. Yeah, I know my sister is like so excited to get the cookies there. Yeah, her, the highlight of her day of her week, you know? But yeah, and then a few of the concerns that were voiced are like hallway traffic. So some of the students from SSA talked about how it's like hard to get through the doorways between schools and how sometimes like the one-way hallways don't really work. And also middle school is also, are finding some trouble adjusting to the new cumulative platform, but they've been handling it really well.
Um, so the high school was definitely in full swing. We had curriculum night and so on September twenty-seventh, and that was really well attended. We had a lot of student volunteers who helped like tour the, um, student, the parents around and stuff like that. The club fair was last week and we had around thirty clubs participate. I know we have even more clubs that didn't participate, but that's been really nice for freshmen to get involved. The new college and career readiness office has been sending student reminders to, for college visits. We've been having about twenty college visits a week and students have been highly attending those. The band was interviewed yesterday morning by Cairo News, um, for their upcoming week. So that's been really exciting. And on, on October nineteenth at seven P M, there's the tenth annual playwriting competition. So there's gonna be five original plays written by students.
And then in addition, our sports are doing really well, especially our football team, who is now four to two, um, record now. And then the senior nights have also already happened for the golf and tennis teams. And in the upcoming weeks, it'll, um, the volleyball, girls soccer, boys water polo and more will be having their senior night. It's really sad to see the seniors go. And then the girls' dive team, they recently competed in Wisconsin and they competed against three schools across two days. And they did really well and they lost by a narrow three points. And it's really tough out there, so they did a great job. And then finally, uh, the next climate change in human geography class at the high school for the freshmen has been really popular. And they've been following the AP Human Geography textbook and also climate, climate change textbook in conjunction with that. And they recently had a guest speaker that has spoken to the UN, um, come talk about climate change, which is really exciting. And then also last week, all AP US History students had a revolutionary roundtable discussion in the Commons where they discussed like different articles read about our nation's past. And it was a great way for the APUS students to connect and build a community.
Yeah, so as you guys know, it's homecoming week, so we've had a spirit meet this week and it's been really great to get everyone involved. It's good community building. Tomorrow we have our parade at five P M. I, um, that's gonna be really exciting in our assembly too. The dance is on Saturday, um, and ASB has been trying to sell as many tickets as possible. The first hundred kids who bought tickets got cupcakes, so it was a big deal. ASB has also launched a brand new website, um, and they've been putting out weekly updates. So there's just been lots of good outlets of student voice recently in the school. Um, and as Ava said, we had our first SSA meeting last week. We talked about belonging, like kind of define what belonging means, like to, what it means to be an islander, how you feel like people want us to islander. Students in SSA were feeling really good about school, like really the only concern we had was the change in the cookies and that was it. They're like smaller this year, sixty cents. It's crazy.
They're smaller and they cost more?
Yeah. It's crazy.
Per chip unit crisis, I think.
So what's the inflation rate for you? Any questions from other board, from board members? Uh, I, I am curious how, uh, students are feeling about getting the classes they want. And I know it's, ad drop date comes up, there was lots of concern earlier about not being able to get, get the classes. How's that worked out?
Students, at least like that I'm trying with, are feeling fine with what they have. I think, uh, Ms. Dean is the, she's the assistant principal. She's been working on like a new way to rework the course catalog so that we have less problems this year with it. So she hosted like one or two informational sessions and like sessions with students so that like we can talk about like ways to like stop this problem properly.
Oh, that's great.
And Ava and I attended it and it was really nice.
And then like, um, we're having a bunch of groups, student groups, like ASB and Student Senate, providing a lot of feedback on that as well. So that's gonna be exciting to see a new system. But I think, yeah, in general, I feel like students are pretty satisfied with their course choices, even though the counselors, I feel so bad for them.
I think one of the things, you know, we can continue to talk either in SSA or, um, or when we're meeting is, you know, how do we get to a place where when students make their choices in the spring, that there's not so many schedule changes in the fall? Both from your perspective as students of knowing what courses you're gonna have, but then also, you know, we end up staffing in the spring and then the classes, then we have to shuffle. And sometimes then we don't have the right teachers teaching the right courses and we're scrambling there. And so I know that's a piece of the process as we start moving forward. But thanks for participating in that as well. As leaders, I know students are looking to the two of you, so thanks.
Yeah, it's so much better when the students are involved in fixing the problem than board members. Much closer to the right solution in these cases. So thank you. Any, any, anything else you have for us?
Nope.
Nope.
Yeah.
All right. All right, uh, with that, uh, do we want to take a couple-minute break while we, we jitter in the public input? So let's take, come back in three minutes? All right, uh, we are returning from a little mini recess to set up the room. It's six oh seven and we will do public input now. We have five, uh, people this evening for public input. Kirsten Doolh first, um, but I will just read my disclaimer real quickly. The meeting, the meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It's not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. When addressing the board at the meeting, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. appoint a spokesperson of the concern that the group's concerned and if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that may or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parents or guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues raised. With that, Kirsten, thank you.
Thank you so much and good evening. My name is Kirsten Doolh and I'm representing the Island Park Elementary School PTA in light of the long-range facility planning process and outreach. Thank you, Dr. Rendell, for bringing this information to our community and for receiving our feedback at the sessions the past two days. I know this is early on and the rest of the board has yet to hear the survey data, but I wanted to reach out on behalf of our families and offer some context for Island Park's participation. Our parent board, uh, when the time is right, plans to make a more formal presentation at a later date. And also I kind of came into the conversation late and I'm elated to hear that you're already taking action on the Island Street cover. But still, I, I wanted to, for our PTA, provide, uh, provide this, uh, information and these, that, these perspectives. Island Park families, as you know, came into this process before the community, community engagement sessions began by viewing slides showing the idea of Island Park being consolidated as early as twenty twenty-four and twenty-five. While we understand that nothing has been decided, this information caused concern within our community before we got more context and has been the focus of many families participate, participate, sorry, participation in the process. and has been the focus of many families participate, participate, sorry, participation in the process. Fast forward to the community sessions this week. I'm proud of our Island Park families for coming out to the sessions and making their feelings known. Although many of the sentiments centered around schools consolidation, it was made clear that consolidation is not necessarily tied to or needed to move forward with a bond. Still, many families are new to the LRFP process and are still processing the information and their role within it. Also because much of the feedback was centered around Island Park consolidation, meaning Island Park families' feedback was centered around that topic. As Island Park families feel, we need to hear what the rest of the elementary school community feels and what impacts may arise with any given scenario. Spending more time in the engagement phase makes a lot of sense to us and when the time is right, seeing a more nuanced set of scenarios for elementary schools that encompass a broad range of possibilities does too. We believe this will help our families make a more informed decision on whether to move to a bond. Families appreciated the discussion on the four versus three school models. They overwhelmingly prefer the four school model over the three school model. While, excuse me, um, nothing is decided yet, the value proposition for potentially closing Island Park, a neighborhood school, has not been seen by our families. Many families feel that the ability to be supported by a smaller school community doesn't need relate to academic and social success. Our families feel that while these aspects may not be completely quantifiable, they outweigh the quantifiable. And as one parent put it last night, there's a secret sauce that only Mercer Island has and is known for. And Island Park is the center of that mid-island community. Many of our families have articulated that this very community existed before us, drew us to the area and hope that it will be here twenty years from now and more, it's bigger than us. Also, many participants cited the fact that the island, uh, preferred the four school model when work was built and feel that it's preferable to go back to three school models if you're still rebounding from the COVID lockdown years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Chris Paluso, please.
Thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Chris Paluso and I'm the father of a first grader at Island Park, probably no surprise. And, um, I, I do appreciate, um, everything I've heard and, and the sentiment, the, the notes that you've, and the, uh, information that you've provided. I almost feel what I'm saying is a reiteration of everything you said about a half hour ago because, um, I reserved my comments because I was actually hoping that more of the board members would be at the events the last couple nights, but I appreciate you addressing maybe why, uh, on purpose that, uh, it was maybe unwise or maybe a distraction for directors to be there. So I appreciate you addressing that because it was, you know, a topic of, of, of discussion at the events. But, uh, I wanted to share my story to you directly so that you could hear that. Uh, and, and we moved here, um, from, uh, Europe two years ago because we were looking for a place with smaller schools and a strong community. And when we visited the Pacific Northwest, we felt that this was it. And we chose our home in large part because we could walk to Island Park Elementary and we do that every morning. But this is also why we didn't choose other school districts. Um, and we don't want Mercer Island School District to follow in their footsteps uh, among the discussion of consolidation because that is obviously a topic that's going on and, and being taken, um, action, actionated on today. Uh, I do have many concerns if we were to close any elementary school on the island. Most of all, the effects it will have on our kids and their connection to their friends and classmates who are also their neighbors that walk to school together. We visit Island Park outside of school hours to play there, to walk around, to meet friends. It's central, it's a central part of our community. Uh, over the last couple nights, I was able to hear ma- many stories from longtime residents of multiple generations going through Mercer Island School District as well as newer residents who came here for similar reasons as ours and nearly all expressed their desire to keep four elementary schools open. We can see that many of our neighbors who were raised here have chosen to raise their families here all because of the community and education they benefited, benefited from themselves. Regarding a proposed bond, personally, uh, my family and I are happy to invest in the continued excellence of our children, schools and their programs. Those before us have done this and we hope others will do it in the future. I cannot, however, support a good conscience, the consolidation of elementary schools because I love our community and our school. But I do see the need to upgrade facilities, to finish work we started in previous years and to complete overdue projects that could require a bond or other levy money, which is why I'm interested in hearing more about these projects today. Long term, I would like to see proposals on how to renovate our three older elementary schools. Thank you for listening to my story and I look forward to more ongoing productive community inclusion.
Thank you, Chris. Elizabeth, uh, Elizabeth Buckley, Buckley, sorry.
My name is Elizabeth Buckley and I currently have three children in the district, one senior sophomore and second grader at Island Park. I have sat through several meetings with our superintendent and the representative from Alum Architects. They have been very thoughtful and very thorough. Thank you. We really are blessed with a great superintendent who cares. Heard he even visited the high school students during lunch and talked with them this week. Our daughter really appreciated it and so did her friends.
I didn't set that up. I just met her from the first time. And she was like, you know my mom. And I said, okay, tell me more. So that was my accident.
It speaks to you coming and talking to the students. That's wonderful. It's good for them to see you. I never knew our superintendent except through my mother who was a public school teacher. He never came to our school. What is striking is, as you explained earlier, why the board members aren't there, but I really wish you could have heard the great stories. We really would like to preserve our four schools. The reason you're feeling a lot of emotions from us is because we really care. Um, throughout all the meetings again and again and again, people said, please keep the four schools. Second generation Island Park parents with children at the school moved back specifically from other states and countries to put their kids in the same school. So it really matters. Retired school teachers, past school board members spoke and parents from Island Park and also from other schools. These proposals don't make sense to us because you will be breaking the very thing that makes our district special in the region and actually more like neighboring communities. Elementary schools of four hundred and fifty students versus six hundred. This is why we built Northwood and we still want four smaller neighborhood elementary schools. Nothing has changed. We also don't want a hundred and fifty more students being crammed into traffic on Fortieth by the two elementary schools and high school and the same on the south with the middle school in Lake Ridge. Also, there is a message of no large bond at this moment, keeps coming up. It's making people really anxious. We are in a recession with a lower credit rating and we do not need to saddle the community with more debt and years of turmoil. With these proposals, our elementary children will be moving up to two to three times while closing an elementary school and then busing those children who once walked while spreading out the center island. This is not an effort to say no to funding for schools, very supportive of that. It is an effort to preserve what makes our school district great and our elementary schools special. In closing, I encourage you to look at census numbers and realize we have more children attending private schools, not less, less children overall on the island. We also are seeing an increase in K through five now that COVID restrictions are over. Families are returning and new families are moving here because their children are old enough for school now. What are their needs? How can we address those and welcome back those families that left? We need two to four more years to see where our elementary school numbers stabilize because asking the community to support a giant bond while you close a school and consolidate is simply not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next up is Mark Turango, please.
I only filled that out because I thought I had to to sit. I do not have any prepared comments.
Thank, thank you for attending. Cheers. Cheers, Mark. Uh, and, uh, next up then Campbell Austin, please.
I'm back. I spoke to you in August when this first came up. And it's been, I learned about the process of addressing the board at the time and it's been good to have learned the process for how long range facility planning, uh, has conducted. I, the first thing I wanna say is Director Laurie, thank you for your words at the beginning of the meeting. I personally have been unsure how to support my impacted neighbors the last few days and you gave me some good ideas, so thank you. I'm here to talk about the long range facility planning. Dr. Randall, thank you for all of your effort over the last year plus on this project. Attend the sessions, I count twenty plus hours from you and your team in the last week, week and a half, whether it's the community sessions or the PTAs. Thank you Director Tucker for attending a course on yesterday. Means a lot to the community as others have said. It's great to hear that you're recognizing, hearing and recognizing the community's views. It's, uh, Director Lawrence, you proposed pausing the conversation. I think that would be very well received by the community. I think even better would be an official recognition. The community does not want consolidation, does not want to close a school, but small schools, not big schools. I think that the third thing I would say is that any construction or bond proposals should be tied to student outcomes data. It says, the students do better, good new buildings. Uh, that was, that was a gap. I know, uh, that my wife wrote, uh, before the meeting and so it's a bit outdated given the stuff that you've covered, but I, I did wanna, um, figure a portion of it. Uh, this is a personal anecdote. Our brand new principal at Island Park knows the name of every student at Island Park, everyone. You just started in September. That's how you make us a community. That's how you prioritize the students. It's how you keep their, help their parents raise kind, courageous and engaged students. If you take one message from the community, it's that we love our neighborhood schools. We prefer our current smaller elementary schools to bigger fancier ones, especially if it's at the cost of years of disruption and churn. Please, please, please keep all Mercer Island's beloved native elementary schools open.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there any other public input, uh, if you're present? Okay, uh, with that, we will close public input. Thank you very much for taking the time, uh, to share your views, attend the listening sessions and, uh, fill out the surveys so that both this board and the next board can have a full view of all of the data involved. So thank you, most appreciated. All right, uh, let, let us, uh, keep moving on with the agenda. Uh, I believe we go back up to, uh, to a thread, uh, communication and support to the board, the school district improvement plan.
Great. Um, so at our last meeting, we were able to present the learning side, the learning services, um, portion tied into our, um, schools regarding student, uh, achievement, teaching and learning and the parts that we skipped over due to time, um, had to do with our communications, our human resources and our finance, um, team. So, um, why don't the three of you, you can come up here or if you'd rather just stay where you are and present there, you can stay right where you are as well. Stay?
Stay.
Last year, we made a change with our school improve, or our district improvement plan, um, in that rather than just making it about teaching and learning, we know that the departments that these individuals lead and, and work in are absolutely critical to, to that process. So, um, in our second iteration then, we gave them an opportunity again to update where they are, um, in their work and the improvement plan efforts from there. So why don't we start with, um, um, finance? Okay, you can go first there and then, um, we'll go down, we'll just go to cons and then we'll finish with HR. And so, um, and Reeves, if you will bring, uh,
Pulling it up, right?
Perfect.
Please stay on.
Uh, Mr. Sullivan couldn't make it. He hadn't been up for procedure. He's at home, so here I am.
I was just wondering if the owl is gonna pick them up if they're over there or should we move it a little closer?
Does it?
It, I'll move it a little bit closer because it would be better to be just a little bit close. The mic's a little bit closer to them. You were starting comps?
Uh, starting.
Planets. Sorry, I'm just getting to the right slides. Twenty seven.
Ready?
Oh, I said twenty seven, sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
So business services. Um, our goals are maintain staff, parent, and community support by focusing on the resources for the classroom. We go out and meet with all the schools to make sure that they have the supplies and what they need each year. That is a goal of Matt and I. Is cost effective, balanced, sustainable and meet bargaining commitments and meet all legal requirements. Maintain adequate budget and reserves to meet the financial requirement of, of the district's policy. And we've been working on that for the last year. Um, let's see, next slide, um, we implement procedures necessary to protect the accounting of the school district. We wanna make sure we follow all Washington state rules. I'm not gonna read it line for line if that's all right with you guys. Okay. Um, we have been keeping the board very informed of our finances. That is one thing Matt and I strive for, is to keep everybody, all of you informed. And you'll be seeing a year in presentation on October twenty sixth. Hopefully, it's a little more difficult with cumulative to get the books closed, but we're working very hard to get that done for you and ready for you. Um, maintain an annual budget reserve of eight percent. That's our goal. We were striving for that. It's gonna be a couple of years before we reach it, but we did have a nice increase this year. We're very proud of, which you'll see. And, um, with the, um, reserves below five percent, we will keep you informed at every meeting with the finances. The one thing we're very proud about, we did pay back the two point two, uh, two million dollars. Um, we had it all paid back by April. We ended up paying twenty seven thousand in interest on that loan, but it is paid back, which is okay. That was my first goal when I started. We did get a safety net, a transportation grant this year, which truly helped the transportation department of a hundred and forty seven thousand. That is the transportation of McKinney Vento students and special ed students. It's new funding from the state. We did apply for two hundred and seventy, but we received a hundred and forty seven. Um, the Clean Washington, um, state audit was, we did great on that. That has to do with the energy efficiency idea of our buildings. Um, the other one, adopt the, the budget by June, which we did. That gave us July off, not off, but at least a little less stressful for all of us. Um, we developed, Matt has developed, um, developed the dashboard, which gives you a nice layout of each month of our expenditures, where we stand percentage wise and how we're looking for the year. Um, we have completed some capital projects and we're still working on those. Um, we are looking at getting two more electric buses, which I am so excited about. I think anything electric and saving money and gas, let's go. We are gonna reach our goal. Um, we're estimating a two point six million ending fund balance this year in the general fund. So it's gonna be in between three point three to three point five percent. That's quite substantial after paying back the two million in the loan. And we're hoping, as you can see, by, um, twenty three, twenty four, to be up to four point five, five percent. This is gonna take a district-wide work to get there. And we've been communicating a lot with the administrators throughout the buildings. And then, who knows, twenty four, twenty five, they will be at five to six. Right, Fred?
That's right.
And future bonds, that has to do with the long, you know, facility plan. Um, our next step is gonna be, um, monitoring and identifying data points and starting intended goals of what, we wanna go out to the buildings and see which each building's goals are or what they want to see in our district. You'll see Matt and I, um, and part of our business team going out to all schools during the year. We're gonna start doing monthly visits to start and we're maybe gonna go twice a month. I think it's important for us to go out. I even attended the high school. I went to one of the classes at the high school for the student store and I met with those students and it was wonderful. I had a wonderful time talking with them. We weren't quite running the store right and we're changing it, so it's working that great. And that's about it. I think, yeah. Any questions you have for me?
This is not a question that I need an answer to today, but just something that I've been hearing from parents who, um, but just something that I've been hearing from parents who, when the topic of bonds comes up, they talk about the fact that our bond rating's a little bit lower right now. And I would love to know at some point, not tonight, is there a point at which, like, when we've recovered our, you know, reserves up to a certain point, we're like, did it get back that higher bond rating? Or is it sort of just like mysterious, it's like a mysterious process, like we have Michelin star for your restaurant?
As our reserves increase, then our bond rating will, you know, the rate that we pay will be less. Because we have to change our Moody's. Matt reports something every year that then affects the Moody's rating, and that's what it runs on. And because we had to take the $2 million loan, that's why it dropped. And we paid that back, and we're showing an increase, and the auditors are checking very closely too.
So means that should likely to increase as our reserves increase? Okay, then I did get an answer tonight, thank you.
And to some extent, it doesn't matter, I mean, what underlies a good Moody's rating is important. It's just financial stability. But because it's backstopped, any future bond issuance by the state, at least my understanding here is there's less of a direct impact in terms of a fall in the downgrade for Moody's, in terms of actual borrowing costs because of the state backstop?
Yeah, it just helps pass your bonds.
We still continue to recognize that what it represents is quite significant.
And it does help pass your bonds when you have a good Moody's rating.
Asha, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you very much. And I'm glad you're spending time in the schools and with our students. It's important, you know, we have budget cuts impact us in so many different ways, whether, you know, what classes we have, what size of classrooms, teachers, all these curriculum adoptions. Budget impacts us in so many ways. It's fees that were just increased for the athletic fees. So, great for people to know about this and understand this more broadly. So, thank you very much for doing that.
Great. If you leave now, could you make your... Let's go to Cons.
All right, on the first slide, regarding communications. These materials are taken from our communications plan, our second communications plan that we published just a little while ago. It's a plan that will be published annually. I want to highlight some of aspects of these different bullets on this page. The first bullet, develop and maintain positive collaborative relationships. Several examples of where that is in action. One is, I met with all the fall coaches, athletic coaches, beginning of the year, and Blaine invited me out, and I introduced myself, and all the coaches, I told them about what I can do for them to support them, communicate about their events, about their games, about their athletes. And a couple of coaches have taken me up on that, and on our Instagram stories, we're now posting soccer videos, little 10, 15-second soccer clips with players.
Are you doing those?
What's that?
Are you doing those?
I'm not doing those. A member of the soccer team is doing that, connected. But the point of establishing a relationship with them to provide that content that which we then post is one example of just establishing some collaboration and establishing some relationships with these groups. And I've heard from volleyball team, who posted some pictures. So, that meeting introduced me, put my name and face to who I am and what I do and how I can support them. Another example of that is just with our realtor outreach. At the new family event, I heard from several realtors who just came up to me and told me how much they appreciate the website that we've provided them and how it has impacted their relationships with their clients, and how they can tell their clients what's going on in the school with our packets that we pass out and just with what we're providing in that vein. And then a third example of that involves Asha and Ava. I've established a collaborative relationship with Michael Ketchum at the high school about video production, and I reached out to him about ideas to use students to broadcast stories, broadcast things that are going on. And I reached out to Asha and Ava and said, how about we do a video that highlights the high school like we did last year with Andrew and Asha? And we're working on a way to highlight the school, put it on the website, use that video to tell what's going on about our programs and different things. But that comes from just working with an internal member of the community to provide communications to the district. Another aspect of this slide on here is the second bullet, using a variety of media. We put out a new family survey after the new family welcome event. We'll be, I'll be presenting data from the survey. We have 52 families so far that have filled out the information, while presenting that in December, at the December meeting. I believe this is part of OE-9. But that's just an annual ongoing thing that we'll be doing, that survey, but it's a different type of media in the sense of, it's just a survey as opposed to video, as opposed to text, as opposed to a story. But it's using all of that information within that survey that we provided to present to you, to present to the community, but also to see what is in that survey that might be a story, that might be a story to tell a new family or to tell, or to talk to someone like Michael Ketchum and say, hey, we heard that new families say X, Y, and Z. What do you think about a story, a video, if a student were to do something in a video that addressed that survey? So, that survey, while it's a Google form, also could impact other types of content that we would produce to tell a story, or other types of platforms that we use to tell a story. The fourth bullet on there, Achieving Coordinated Communications. I've been meeting regularly with IMS and MIHS about how I can support them, and we have a really good relationship this, start of this year of how we can tell stories, what we can tell is going on. I'm meeting with the high school tomorrow, and we have some discussions about School Messenger and the email platform we use, and some of the difficulties that we've faced recently just with something that we want to do. But being able to be there, to be seen, to have a relationship, to develop a relationship, helps achieve coordinated communications, not just with the administrators, but the admin assistants that are using the platform to send messages. And then, a second thing, oh, going back to, sorry, I missed this, the second. The using a variety of media. At the Long Range and Silver's Planning Committee meeting, or the meeting last night at the high school, Superintendent Rundle was asked how we're using different platforms to attract students and how we're looking to bring new students back, and we highlighted Niche and the realtor. And when Superintendent Rundle spoke about Niche and how we're targeting ads to people that are going on the platform to look at Bellevue, or Lakeside, or Redmond, or somewhere else, there was, I noticed a murmur through the audience of like, oh, okay, that's a little bit interesting. Someone going to look at Bellevue High School, and they're seeing ads for Mercer Island because we're targeting ads towards those people that are looking for schools. So that's just anecdotal, that's just when you're sitting there listening to the meeting and you hear people, oh, okay. So it just that was good to hear, but it was also surprising in a way that like, okay, there's some evidence that that's well-received. And so, I just, I found that interesting just from the connection of last night. And then if we go to the second slide, we have some highlights of just things that are coming up this year, things that we've had going. Cairo TV was at the high school yesterday in the band room. All the band was there, every member of the marching band was there, and they did a story. It's on our platforms. And the new, the cultural and academic calendars have been very well-received. I've heard lots of feedback on that from families and just from administrators at school. I know that they've, having it, they've been able to avoid instances of sketching something when they didn't take into account that there was a date of significance. Yeah, so, yeah, that's just some of the highlights that we have going. Any questions or thoughts or...
I have just a thought. I'm like, first of all, thank you both for your tireless work on this. I'm always so happy to see when we get our weekly board update, how much, I'm always like, are there four evens? Like, how is it possible to have three all of these things? So, thank you for what you're doing. I was talking to a parent today who was saying, like, where are the parents when it comes to like the sort of daily grind of parent volunteer positions? Like, she has kids at the elementary level, but she's chaperoning at high school, I guess the homecoming dance this weekend, you know, because there weren't enough high school students stepping up. So it just popped into my head when I see celebrating staff on social platforms, how about celebrating our parent volunteers on social platforms? Because I think this parent was saying, she was talking to a fellow parent at a back-to-school, but was like, oh, I don't have time for that because I work full-time. And she was like, I work full-time, you know? So, it's like, maybe, maybe just even to show like what some of the parent volunteer opportunities are, and how do people fit it in? Like, how do people fit it in if they're working full-time, you know?
Very good suggestion.
I have heard such rave reviews of the communications, you know, in the last year. And, just thank you. It's making a huge difference, and, you know, thank you. It's making a huge difference. People are feeling really good about what they're seeing. It's so, never have, I mean, I don't know if our kids have always been this amazing, but to see all the accomplishments and all, I think so. But to see all of the accomplishments, and you know what? Each one of them deserves their moment to shine, and thank you for providing that.
I've found that the more respectful posting begets more people reaching out.
Right.
Which is nice, right? Like, it's, all right, let's go.
It's so, it's so good because everyone's, you know, and why I kind of piped in, sorry to interrupt you, about the soccer, I love seeing the soccer videos, and, because I have a soccer player, and another one. But, you know, I mean, it's so fun to see, and everyone likes to see what their kid's doing, but we also love to see what our kids' friends are doing and what everyone else is doing. And, you know, I always, I tell people, I try and tell people all the time, like, they don't know unless you tell them. Like, there isn't some magical pipeline where the school gets notified of everything that our kids are doing outside of school, or sometimes even within school. So, you know, I think that message was really important. I love, I reached out to the coaches and maybe the club advisors and, you know, the club leaders. And, I mean, I'm sure you're doing the leadership groups at the high school, but thank you. It's making a huge difference.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of our theories when we started off as a team, you know, last year when I moved into this role was, you know, if there's more competition now than ever before for education, then what are we gonna do about it? And one of those was to just look at what we're already doing and amplify. And Ian's run with that, and really just, and then the next piece is elevate, because we can't just be living with that, we've gotta continue to get better. But I think that's what, Ian, you've really done. And I think our students have been amazing, they always have been amazing. We just haven't been highlighting them. We just had a down year in '91.
There aren't too many, there aren't too many to compete with '90.
Oh, '90.
No, no, '90 was like the top of the top, so they don't really...
It was a peak year in '99.
Right.
Someone who likes '42, it's the 42nd yearbook, so, there's some saturation.
Thank you, Ian. Yeah, I think as people think, what are we doing to attract students from private schools? I mean, it is a slow, methodical, and very great deal of work, you know, to do this. And this is, this is how you build brands, this is how you build a reputation. And we could be standing out with signs and speeches that wouldn't have the same impact as the reality of what's happening with our kids. So, most appreciated. I don't think we get enough credit for all the different things this enables, whether it's new families onto the island, or families already on the island deciding to choose our schools. So, thank you.
Great. And then Erin, on the HR side.
So, we continue, sort of with the Bs, trying to create a deep set of belonging with our staff, remove barriers, and support the belief in the limited potential of our students through our staff, because they're critical, and broadcasting student voice, because a lot of that is done by staff like Ian and others to help elevate the voice. Because again, the students are fantastic, but I think our staff are too, and they help bring that and support our students in their pursuit of their pathways to success. And sort of what evidence do we look at within, with our staff to see how we're doing? In terms of creating belonging, part of it is to ensure that we are screening for promoting cultural sensitivity and global awareness through targeted interview questions, so they're bringing people on board who appreciate and understand diversity and inclusion, are seeking a place where that is valued, because we really want our staff to mirror our own district values. And that ultimately supports the student, because everything we try to do goes back to what, how are we helping the students? In terms of removing the barriers, we're continuing our efforts, excuse me, at workforce diversification, which I think we are making progress, it's hard in an environment or a profession, specifically with education and teacher, for so few of our certificated staff are people of color. But we continue to strive for an increase in the number of teachers who are people of color, so that our students can see themselves in our staff. But we also have a lot of classified staff, and that goes, that we're able to bring in. If you go on to the next slide, so that's one of our celebrations, is that our workforce of diversification continues. And part of that is through our Grow Your Own Teachers, and we've seen diversification, and I know I've spoken about it before, where people have come into our school as par educators, bus drivers, nurses, and other positions, and been able to pursue education while here to ultimately become teachers. So, our students have the benefit of seeing people supporting them, and we consider all of our staff educators, supporting them throughout their educational careers, but also seeing people develop. And moving from, we have currently a staff member who's preserving an admin certificate. So they're moving both from classified to certificated position, certificated administrative positions. And that's something that we do in terms of retention. We've really worked on mentorship both with, through our certificated and classified staff, so that we can have cross-pollinization and exposure to different areas, so people are continually curious and learning, and pushing themselves so they can learn what other people are doing, and expand their own horizons. Because again, that's good modeling for our students as they try new things and take risks. And really, I keep saying that we are doing that as if it's HR. It's something that happens through the organization. There may be things that HR is leading, but I just mentioned mentors. Those are actually our certificated staff, supported by Learning Services and our administrators, or classified staff, like, they're their peers, and that's a very good way to help people develop, really develop relationships that ultimately keeps them here, which is retaining our teacher. In terms of broadcasting student voice, we're trying to celebrate our staff, engage students in the interviews, so that it helps them, helps us get staff who are a, who are meeting our students' needs, because we have our student voice in the interview process. And so, when they get here, they know who our kids are, they've been, our kids have seen them. That's helpful for the staff, because when ultimately the staff show up, they see a kid who may have interviewed them, so they immediately find a champion within the school in a student, which I think is helpful. But I think it's helpful because it gives a different perspective to the interview teams. So it gives us a lens that I think historically may have lacked, because we didn't have those student voices. And going, if we could advance to the next slide, just in terms of going back to our sort of evidence, we have fewer voluntary departures this year than we have had in the last two or three years. We're sort of gonna have to leave out COVID, because we had a disproportionate number of people who chose to leave the profession at that time. But we did have fewer voluntary departures, which is quite a celebration, not only because it's just we got to keep our fantastic staff, but it's also a celebration, is what we've had to do because of budget constraints is hard on our culture, it's hard on our people. And I think our staff stay here because they care about each other, and they care about the students, and they care about this organization. And I, my hope is that they feel that from us as well. And the fact that people do stay, I think that's some evidence that we are doing the right thing by our staff. Does that mean that we're perfect? No, we still have room to grow, but that is what we're trying to do. There's a sense of belonging, but I think that's evidence of that. And finally, we've tried to expand our trainings to staff, that's something that, in terms of technology, both before and after school opportunities, so more people can take advantage of that. Areas of continued work is, we've struggled with retention of newer teachers. That is where we've seen some turnover, part of that maybe because we've had to riff. I think that's very scary, especially for those who are new to a district. I think that's very scary, especially for those who are new to a district. But I'm sure there are things that we can do better to help them feel the affinity that I think some of our, uh, people who've been here three, four years or even sometimes forty years feel. So trying to create that affinity early for the district early on, um, in their career when they join here. That's something that we can work on. And, um, we're trying to get more feedback from our staff. One of the things that we did get feedback is we scheduled these technology trainings. Um, in collaboration with MIA, they've been a great partner on things, communicating what staff need or how they are feeling. And so, uh, we did have enhanced IT trainings for our classified staff, but we didn't communicate them with enough lead time that they felt they could take full advantage. So having those on the calendar, we able to get those scheduled, so we've made improvement there. And then finally, just with cumulative, that, that creates a level of frustration, um, in staff, just as I think you mentioned with students. It's just, we're doing it, but it's hard. And when things hard and there's constant, everything is, is frustrating. So trying to be proactive to address things before they are a major choice point in people's work. Um, I think that will help. So those are sort of our reflections on HR. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Anything, directors, students? Uh, I appreciate the diversity report you had given us last time where we compared Myer Island to neighboring districts so that we can work to, uh, at least be competitive with neighboring districts as we grow. Uh, so that, that's, that was a really nice metric. And I hope we continue to track that metric and to show the diversity of our workforce improving. Uh, also, uh, appreciate the work on bargaining and making sure that our employees are paid well and, uh, it continue to ensure that this is a great place to work and live for, for staff. And I think that probably helps with retention a lot, uh, as well moving forward. Anything else?
I'd like to add one thing, just, um, for any students who are listening over here. Having fantastic kids really does help keep, attract and keep, um, staff. So the fact that our students are so great, are passionate about so many things, um, and that they're, um, they're supportive families, that really does make a difference because we, we're engaged. And it's nice to know that when you're working, um, as a teacher or an educator, bus driver, it's nice to know that people are passionate and care about what you're doing. Um, and that you can see fantastic kids coming through. And I'm sure that's true in a lot of districts, but I certainly feel it here. So thank you to all our students.
Thank you. And, uh, we didn't have reaction on this one, but just, uh, yeah. Let's move on to item three.
Can I have a?
Oh, sorry.
I don't have anything about HR, but can I, um, I'm sorry, a late thought about communication. Um, I just wanna reiterate, ninety times, uh, comment about how wonderful we're really doing to amplify uh, everything that's happening in our community. And, you know, just looking through our website, it is so text heavy. Uh, so as we move forward to the next kind of, how do we always improve? Uh, if we can, uh, make it more visual, think about, uh, those who don't read, uh, you know, English is a second language. Um, even like I'm used to reading, you know, a lot of dissertation lately. This is reading like a dissertation for me. So it just kind of, um, there's a lot of great information, but it is kind of intimidating to those who don't read English, you know, as their first language. So next phase in how do we make things better for our community? It's just a lot, think about how do we quickly present information, uh, in multiple ways? And then maybe have, uh, a lot of this information, uh, support, right? For those who wanna deep dive deep into some different layers of accessing information.
Well, I just wanna comment before Ian may wanna speak. But there is on the lower part of the website for anyone listening, there is the option to pick different languages. So you don't have to necessarily read in English, just if you weren't aware that that was available. Um, if you go down to the bottom of the page, it says English. And then there's several, there's multiple languages that you can choose. You can also run Google Translate over the document. That's the website. Um, so appreciate everything you're saying, not trying to undermine it, but I want people to be aware that if you go to the lower right of, at least on my side.
I have Chinese.
I have a PC. There are options.
Russian, Japanese, Korean, Chinese and English.
Yeah.
I know like Spanish or.
And then that's the alternative would be to run Google Translate over the.
Tell me, Google Translate is not good.
But, but like even that, even that, it would be great to communicate that, like a little video or something, just like showing families.
Yeah. So just want people to be aware if they're listening that there are some options with respect to range, not taking, taking away from what you've said.
So, you know, especially we're doing a lot of Google Translate shorter is better translation than when we have long narratives. It is gonna, you know, we just mess ourselves up and so. But yeah, it is excellent information, just a lot of information, just, um, intimidating. Yeah, um, it's not high.
I agree with you on text. I'm always looking to insert art and insert video or insert some sort of color.
Or just like number one is this, right? And showing like, uh, sports and arts and just kind of, you know, big kind of categories and thing. And then if people wanna dive deep into it, they can click onto something and they can read more. But I think in really ten second, they should, and what any page, they should be able to absorb like what five messages we want to communicate, yes.
I think our website is in much better shape than it was, you know, two years ago, right? Like the new, the new navigation and everything is much more user friendly. I would actually, I have actually never looked before at the page about interpretation and translation. Um, and I would say it's very foolish. Have you like, um, when I used to work at Seattle Children's, like the, all the, all the documents about how to get information in a different language all have, and just at the top, like one sentence in the other language saying like.
Okay, which page?
It's, um, sorry, just close it and then open it again. It's, uh.
Is it?
Connect. If you go to connect, interpretation and translation services.
Oh, I'm on the high school site, hold on.
Uh, and I'm actually sharing my screen and, and showing this to our audience as well. I just searched for translation services at that top link.
Yeah, it's just all in English, like the, so then, you know, you can look down and even it's like parents who are using translation and translation services that are, even the names are in English, like could have like Arabic written in Arabic, Chinese written in Chinese. Just, um, having just come back from visiting a series of countries where I did not speak the local language. I'm very, like, alert to this right now, it's.
Can I add one thing to that? You know, one thing Ian pointed out was just incorporating video in our communication plan. Uh, he came to me earlier today and asked about, um, YouTube and captioning within YouTube. Um, as we continue to use YouTube, it does do auto translation. And within YouTube, um, there is a functionality now to automatically translate the captions into additional languages as well. So as we think about videos of, of school board meetings or even videos that our principals put out, uh, Fred puts out, um, or our, our staff create, uh, there is that ability to add captions and then translate those as well.
Another, another thought, just since we're talking about this, is to really ask parents what they need. Because I know that during the superintendent search process, we were like, oh, we have to have these listening sessions available in these other languages. And so we, you know, arranged like a Chinese interpreter. And then all the parents that came to that session were like, no, it's okay and we can do this in English, you know? So, so it may be that the needs are more for like the written materials, but like the verbal stuff is fine or vice versa or whatever. Like, so just it's in, you guys have very full plates right now, I realize that, but just like kind of in the back of your head. For down the road, it would be great to survey families with not, with even one non-English speaking parent and just say, what exactly do you need?
And just cause right now I go through this process, uh, process at CLIU where they're complaining about all of our websites. And so they're asking us to like cut down, they're like, you, you were writing for our peers. We're not writing to the audience. And so thinking about who our audience is, right, we're writing to each other. And so, um, yeah, so that's why we can actually text them. But I do love all your videos, Fred. And every single time I see your video, I'm like, poor Fred, I wonder if he enjoys this because I would, yeah.
He loves it.
If I have to do these videos, right? So I'm like, great, great Fred.
It's not so bad, I don't mind it.
Well, Ian's working on an outtakes.
I'm reaching for it.
Those are in the vault, Ian, those are in the vault.
Reaching for it.
I don't know, they're great.
Okay, uh, thank you very much for this coverage. And, uh, we, we, we've covered everything now, I think, right?
Yeah, we're up to three A.
Let's move on to three A, uh, or policy, eighteen hundred O E four staff compensation and L line.
Great, um, just I'll preface it and then send it over to Erin, um, again. Uh, one change we did make this year is this has typically actually been given out of our business office, but, um, as part of our ongoing reorg, uh, as we brought on new members, we've shifted this from staff compensation from business to actually HR. This is a function of human resources and, um, Erin and, and the team do a remarkable job, uh, working with our partners with MIA, working with our administrators and non-representative, uh, non-represented staff members who make the district go around. So, um, Erin, I want to give you the, the floor to, um, celebrate some of our successes. And then one of the things that Erin's done this year, based on some feedback from you, is kind of provide a little bit of a glimpse in terms of compensation from a salary matrix is one thing. But what are other ways that are, are, we, we find ways to compensate our staff? Um, to try to make us a desirable place to work besides our awesome students. Erin?
Um, so this is my first time presenting this to you all. I will note that last year we found ourselves not in compliance. If you open on number one, and specifically that reads, develop compensation and benefit plans that attract and maintain the highest quality staff and reward employees consistent with the applicable marketplace with organizations of comparable size and type and within available resources. Within available resources was the sort of key part of the determination why we're not in compliance last year. And that's because we were looking, um, at, we had had to borrow from ourselves and we're looking to pay people back. So it was felt that our, uh, we had not stayed within our resources and our expenditures, when you think that our people are at least eighty-five percent of our budget, um, was outpacing sort of our revenue streams, for lack of better terms. So we are now, um, thanks to the efforts of our finance team, and frankly, it's been a system-wide effort. Um, you know, it's, we're certainly not on austerity measures, but I think people have, um, learned, you know, through the guidance of Matt and his director Sullivan and his team, um, sort of how to appropriately allocate things. Um, we have gotten financial information as leaders earlier, um, so we can more appropriately handle that budget. So I think we're making better fiscal decisions. Um, and it was also helpful in our bargain this year with MIA. I, we got information faster, which I think from our finance team, which was incredibly helpful to both sides of the proverbial table, um, because that is something that we hadn't had before, which had led to much longer, um, bargains. So given that we are now, um, actually building up fund balance versus, uh, eroding it at, and, and deficit spending, um, we are finding ourselves in compliance. Everything else with respect to this particular OE is the same as last year. Do you have any questions just on this piece?
Any questions for members and students? Okay, um, well, with that, could I have a motion to, I know you've got one, what do you got?
One more piece of this.
One more piece, but we can, you can refer to mention it because it's separate from, that's fine. Yeah, so could I have a motion to find, uh, the superintendent in compliance with, uh, uh, the OB administrative report compliance? So. Thank you, uh, all the favors, students?
Aye.
And directors?
Aye.
Aye. It's, uh, two zero, five zero in superintendent is in compliance uh, with OE four monitoring report, eighteen hundred. And with that, we'll continue, Erin, thank you.
So if we could open the next topic, this actually also relates to one, because as I think people may, are likely aware, because I did share it in the, when we brought to you the TA from last year. Uh, our, our certificated and classified, uh, staff took what amounted to a sort of blended IPD that was sort of then spread differently between the two groups of MIA. So it was essentially pot of money, which is IPD, which is, uh, implicit price deflator, is the money we get from the state. And then it was, uh, but they didn't get the straight percent because we, we staff higher than the prototypical school model that we're actually funded on. That's not true of many of our neighboring districts who had settled previously. So we actually ended up giving them a less significant raise on specifically, or their raise was smaller this year than our neighboring districts. Um, part of that was MIA's appreciation of just the financial situation we're in. And I, I appreciate that they, um, understood that and they ultimately agree that we need to be a fiscally sustainable district. But the other thing that I did wanna highlight, that creates what we call like the salary schedule. So the percents that we're talking about really apply to the salary schedule. So if you go a little bit up, um, Andrea's, there I've linked the MIA cert schedule. So that's the certificated schedule. So if you click that, so that those, and you can show, so this is just sort of how we, we pay people. And it's, I'm showing you this only because it's, if you can see that based on experience, it's BA plus ninety. So as you move, that ninety is additional credits or clock hours. So you can move to the right of the schedule. Moving down the schedule is based on time. So the time you're in, in the profession, in the district. Moving to the right is based on credits and clock hours. So that becomes significant. If you could toggle back to the main page, I'm sorry.
Can you refresh my memory, my memory regarding the difference between base, I guess, but what enrichment?
Oh, enrichment has to do with what was, they used to call it, what was it called? Try?
Arc?
Try and arc, it's had different names, but it's basically teacher responsibility incentive, I think is what it now stands. In our contract, it's called triple.
Time response.
Time response incentive. So, um, that has, there's certain required PD, there's PD days there. Um, and if the staff member chooses not to attend, they don't get paid for that. The other thing is it's attendance at certain meetings. And it's just an acknowledgement of the additional work that they do beyond, um, beyond their contract day.
So generally, I think it's safe to assume that people generally do receive the enrichment?
Most people receive the enrichment because few people, um, everyone receives a portion of it and most people receive all of it. If that makes sense. So most people, if you were a BA, uh, step one, year zero, most people would be receiving sixty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. So that is what a starting teacher here would make, um, just on salary. But if you go back to the other, yes, there, sorry. Um, and then we have a classified schedule and custodial schedule, which also moves up with time. This becomes relevant because we, we give out, if you go under MIA certificate additional income. So we offer a lot of clock hours, which helps them move and for free, which helps staff member move to the right of the schedule so they can earn more money. Other ways they earn money, um, or can have an option of getting additional income that's in our contract is they can time card, um, if, at per diem or certificate hourly rate for various things that occur outside of the work day. So if it's not part of their contract day, there are, uh, instances where they can time card. Um, they get additional pay for each student per semester that exceeds a certain class size number, although the high school does have a cap. Um, the staff who inform the district that they're resigning early, they get a potential thousand dollars. We don't want them to resign, but they, there is an incentive there. Um, if an educator during the first, um, five years of a focus cycle, they can earn an additional six hundred dollars that'll go to their professional growth. Um, there's additional pay for overnight trips. They can cash out unused personal leave hours. Um, that has added, everybody gets three days and it's sort of, it works to our advantage. Um, if staff are here, because we want our chosen staff to be educating our kids. But they then don't lose that, they could get that basically as an additional three days of pay. They, they get additional money and time for co-teaching assignment. Nurses get supplemental days, new employees, and it's important, I'm not saying any of this important, but new employees, they get an additional supplemental days to, to of them to do an orientation. Special services staff get additional days. Um, and it just sort of goes on. I don't know if you need me to go through all of this, but there are many options to earn additional pay. Classified staff also get the option, um, to earn additional pay that they may not get in other districts. They have twenty-four additional hours beyond their letter of assignment, um, for optional work and or training. And that's paid at their hourly rate, but if they're at full time, they get paid, uh, overtime. Another thing, um, that they get is the opportunity with our tech levy. So that those dollars can help in. So that those dollars can help increase and give access to our classified to technology training. So again, this is how we're using money to not only boost employee income to help retain them, but also increase their um sort of their training. And we have a belief, and I think it's mutually held by the board, that if we invest in our staff, they're more likely, it's a part of our retention process. So the final and most significant way that we that staff can earn additional funds is through our various supplementals. Now, if you look at our certificated and classified supplemental schedule, um some of, we have staff that anywhere earn on supplemental. So there are additional um duties that they take on that range from curriculum leave, where they're making forty-nine hundred um sixty-five dollars. Or if you are a band director, you're earning additional six thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars on top of your salary. So as you take on additional work, um then you get additional pay, which isn't necessarily reflected in your salary schedule. That's not different necessarily than other districts. But we just want to make sure that you as a board understand that when we're talking about competitive compensation, there are many ways that our staff member can access compensation. Um and that these are ways that we, between the district and MIA, have tried to articulate um what's fair and appropriate for the value that they're giving our students.
And one other thing, um Aaron, this is great, and thank you for putting this together all in one place. Because sometimes we talk about these things, but we don't have like one place to go, so thank you. Andrea, if you would go back to the salary um table.
Search the minute?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Um two things I want to point out on this um that we've worked that are, I think, important. One is that, uh one of the things that Aaron and under the uh leadership of Sally with MIA and the bargaining teams have worked on is how do we compress our schedules so that people can get to the top faster? So if you scrolled down, I believe it's at how many years right now? Sixteen or?
Sorry.
Twenty, nineteen, nineteen.
Nineteen.
So there are districts that have a salary schedule where it looks like, you know, the the that teacher in the bottom right corner is making more than our teachers. Um but it takes them twenty-nine years to get there. And so what we've tried to do is get people to the highest faster, so they have more years of that earning at that higher. And that's been one thing that we've done. The other thing, um and I really appreciate the work that our bargaining teams have done. The other thing that Aaron mentioned is if you, you know, you can't necessarily control how fast you go down, because that's time. But you can control how fast you move to the right. And to the clock hours point, um I haven't checked in two years, so it'll be worth checking again with the ESD. But um as of two years ago, next to the Puget Sound ESD, we were the second largest clock hour earners in our entire ESD. And yet we're not one of the biggest districts. And that is, you know, we have teachers who are um working as teacher leaders on clock hour courses, we have principals. So we are trying to find ways, and it's all free, as Aaron said. When we go to conferences, you pay for your clock hours usually, if there's a certain fee. We're providing that to our staff. Um and I think that that's another testament to our learning services team, our principals, and everyone who's trying to um help people earn those credits. So just want to put that plug in. So thank you, Aaron, for that great work.
And I apologize, I'm coming off of being sick, so I'm not actively on.
Any questions from directors? Uh thank you very much. This gives some insight into the complexity of uh bargaining process and what happens uh when, it's mostly done in private, right? The board sets some parameters, uh the bargaining team from the district and staff go to a closed room and uh come up with this material based on uh our desires and the way we want to see our schools evolve and get better. But it's a very complicated process, clearly with a lot of nuances, not just uh one final number that we can compare very easily against other districts. It's very personalized to each district, and we try to make our district uh the best possible we we can for what our students, our parents, our staff need uh to be here. So thank you very much. I appreciate all the juggling that happens. I know board members are not present in those meetings, parents are not present in those meetings. So there's a there's a lot of magic uh that happens. But uh to be clear, we try to be fair, we try to uh pay well and make this district a great place to work. And we hold our superintendent accountable for that. So thank you for this presentation. Um let's see, are we ready to move on? I think so, right?
Yep.
Uh we're on consent agenda now. Uh could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second?
Second.
Okay, uh all in favor, students?
Aye.
And directors?
Aye.
Aye. Uh against, and that's uh two zero five zero in favor of the consent agenda. Any superintendent announcements?
Um just two. Uh one is uh next Thursday, we'll be at Islander Middle School. And we're gonna join their, I'm gonna check with Michelle, we're gonna join their training, right? So we will be part of a training. Uh usually we have that open time where we're with staff. You're still gonna get that, but it'll be a little shorter. And actually, you're gonna participate along with administrators and staff around suicide prevention training. And so they were already, they had planned this a long time ago. And I said, you know what, that might be really interesting for our board and others. So you're gonna be part of that um when we're there, uh and then we'll proceed with pretty typical um site visit. The um second announcement I have is if you're, if you'd like to participate at all tomorrow in the uh parade, uh it's at four fifteen in the Northwood parking lot. Um I'll be driving uh my truck with different things. So if you'd like to participate, just let me know. Uh we'll meet you over there at four fifteen, um if you want to be in the upcoming parade. And then we'll have the game to follow against um Liberty. Uh and then I know we've had soccer games and and others, in fact, we think we.
We're on our way.
We're on, we're on right now, so.
That's what.
Um anyway, but those are my announcements.
Right, clarification?
Yes.
Are we gonna be on your truck on the back?
If you'd like to be, or you can ride inside the truck.
Just wanna clarify.
I called Tony today and I said, hey, is it okay to have people in the back of my truck or not?
Seeing the sitting on the back of a.
It's a good.
A parking lot.
Basically.
This is not a good look down, this is superintendent, not a good look, he's like, wait, the police want that.
Is the candy gonna be a little more plentiful than last year?
What's that?
Is the candy gonna be a little more paper?
For sure, for sure. So, yes.
Are you ducking out your truck for us?
Um I I am gonna do my best. You're gonna help me, right?
Be like the best birthday present for me to see all you guys in the truck.
Do you want us to dress a certain way?
I think putting all crowns on your head.
We'll be there.
Okay, uh thank you, uh thank you, Fred. Uh Ledger board?
Oh, um not, uh I need, oh, I haven't recorded this. So I, last time I told you we had that meeting with mostly DA two uh directors about the WASDA stuff. Um we're gonna be meeting every other week um regularly. There was, it was good discussion. It was mostly an intro kind of ideas meeting, so nothing was decided at all. But you know, people talked about legislative fix or uh getting and from the attorney general's office uh an opinion on whether or not this is even legal, frankly. Um and so so that it's just starting, there's another one tomorrow. I'll keep recording if certainly if there's anything that we need to take a position on for sure, and then if anything comes up. Um and then I just saw the email, I didn't get one earlier today, that we need to have our legislative position priorities. Um they want to tie the twenty-sixth at five o'clock in our meetings, the twenty-sixth at five o'clock. So maybe we can set aside like twenty minutes at the study session. I don't think it'll be difficult, because we typically, I can even like do a proposal. I I don't think our priorities change that much for that, sort of to keep the, yeah, okay. So I'll I'll propose something and then, yeah.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh announcements accrue and and your reports too.
Well, um I went to the Equity Advisory Council, and it was just really nice to uh be part of our group and to listen to all the schools, all the activities that they're doing to focus on belonging and how um belonging is wherever we want our students to be and how through the culture of dignity, we're gonna help to to achieve that. And then just getting also to hear from the different um cultural, ethnic student and student clubs of all the wonderful things that they're doing and their recruitment process of students to be part of their club this year. So that's really great. And then I I wasn't a, um I didn't know how to say this, but um you know, I'm, yeah, but when you say these kind of things, you know, you always run the risk of saying it wrong and people misinterpreting you. But earlier you said something that I really want to uh highlight, you know, I think of the difficulties during this time. And so it's kind of um, you know, I wanted to reiterate, acknowledge Deborah of uh you really helping us to acknowledge the problems that's happening right now and how we need to be more vocal and uh and really explicit in our help of our community members who are going through this this difficult time. And I also, but one of what made me think about like, I sat through this whole uh meeting, I'm like, should I say something? You know, this is a lot of motions right now. People may interpret uh this wrongly. But I I but in the beginning, you said that you had to really sit with this complexity and recognizing that our students come from a whole range of faith, right? Some who are not, who don't have any, who are seekers, right? And so how do we have space and to recognize and be solidarity with uh colleagues, neighbors, you know, students who are impacted uh from Israel, from our Jewish descent, of Jewish faith? How do we do that and also kind of hold space to also recognize humanities of those who are from Palestine and who are, you know, uh Muslims? And so, you know, on the, you know, it's a, you know, war and conflict, oftentimes it's like, you know, it's generational, it's political. And how do we, I think you brought it up, Deborah, and how do we recognize all that? But also recognize within our student body, there's a lot of diversity and that we should hold space for all of them. So thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I attended the first PAC meeting for Lincoln Ridge this year. And um Heidi worked with our group to to kind of work through some of the concepts from from the training that the staff did on belonging through a culture of dignity, which is the cop and crown apple book and um and like sugar, I don't know, training thing. And um and it was, it was new for a lot of the parents. And so she's purchasing a copy of the book for everyone on the on the pack that doesn't already have one. And I think we're gonna read read it and kind of work through it as the year goes on, which is um, which is nice to have like kind of a a framework for for talking about these issues and kind of thinking about these issues. And um very relevant as town as town goes, so, yeah.
Um just uh, I might have to maybe bring this point to the um new family uh gathering uh last week, which was pretty well attended. It was lots of clubs and um and community organizations were there, so it's pretty fun to see that. Um and uh graduation date has been announced, do you wanna? Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, uh so they finally got February to get back to them. And uh so graduation's June eighth, which is a Saturday at twelve thirty. So get that on your calendars, because um it's a little bit different. The the feedback I've heard, people are thrilled with it. Um and you know, it it presents some interest, some some new uh not challenges, just different. So I I'm excited, but. The challenges we have, like the scene of party, it's early, usually it's late. And then just, and then, you know, it's it's a Saturday and just just different, that's all. And you know, sometimes we don't like, different, different always causes chaos, that's all. But no, it's been really well received.
Uh Dan, um a couple meetings. So I was at the superintendent's advisory council where I presented a condensed version of the long-range facilities plan uh to the various community members that are part of that committee. Um and then also, uh there was the first meeting for the high school PAC, which was uh interesting for me because I have little exposure directly uh to the high school. Um so there was a lot of discussion about AP exams, of the pass rates, um the number of students taking it, and the extent to which uh courses that are builder AP should be geared or should not be geared toward the exam. Um also, discussion of SAT and PSAT are going digital this year, um which will be a first. And I think that it takes place in a couple of weeks. Um so it's a big change uh in terms of adding timing, uh and some of the mechanics and logistics of it. And then lastly, uh one of the talks of conversation was about the course catalog. And there was a comment that I think has been uh mentioned in the board meetings a few times about, you know, perhaps developing personas to a greater extent in terms of, so early on or pathways. What a student who is looking towards an end goal of, you know, perhaps a more STEM focus or an art focus or business focus, what horses would they should be thinking about? And then in combination with extracurricular activities and other um, you know, out of the classroom that would strengthen on that area of knowledge.
Yeah, uh I've got nothing else to add at this point. Uh by other than having attended one of Fred's meetings as well, but uh you've been doing a lot of them, the smaller ones. Uh anyway, I this, that is it. I think we're, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second it?
And uh all in favor, students?
Aye.
And directors?
Aye.
Aye. Two zero five zero, motion to adjourn at seven twenty-seven. Uh thank you very much for your time this evening.